It's going to move in second to prove any discussion or comments. Fall in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Falls. Period. Other item on the agenda is the interviews for older person of District One. Conducting the interviews. Rebecca has kindly sent all of us an email with some rumors on HR practices so that we're not speaking out of line or asking things that we shouldn't be asking. We are not HR professionals. Our staff is, but we are not, so Rebecca will be screening the questions this evening. Our first interviewee is Kimberly Grove. Is that correct?
Yep, that's correct.
And I think Rebecca, you can start anytime you desire.
Sure, I did step out, so did you go over the scoring sheet?
No.
There's, there's a, okay, there's a scoring sheet for each of the candidates if you would be so kind to score the questions. And then obviously write the person's name on it.
Yeah, yeah, don't even blink. That's what we have now, we're blank.
Yes.
And one is, one is optimal, two is average, and three is...
Right, it's golf scores.
Low score is good.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, opposite of one. I just wanted to say that.
Yep, thank you, Marty.
Yes, so I'll be asking the questions. Don't feel obligated to look at me when you're answering, you can look at them. So thanks for your interest in the District One Elder Person vacancy. We're going to go through several questions and then give you the, give the committee the opportunity if there is any follow up.
Rebecca, maybe, maybe we should introduce everybody first. I think it's probably gonna be...
That's a good idea.
I know some faces, but not all.
Do you want me to start?
Sure.
I'm Rebecca Grill, I'm the City Administrator and City Clerk.
I'm Marty Weigle, one of the two second district aldermen, right here where we are.
First order of the medic district Vincent Vitale.
Hi, Dana Keen, Alderman, one of the Aldermen of the third district.
Tom Lysak, fourth district alderman and council president.
I'm Kevin Haas, I'm one of the fifth district aldermen.
Hi, I'm Suzette Grisham, third district Alderman.
Dan Roat, fourth district.
And Tris Tfansky, second district, other alderman.
Thank you.
Thank you, ready now? Okay. Some of these questions were in the submittal that you sent in, but if you can provide the summary for the interview. How do you view the role of an elder person?
I view the role of elder person as a go-between between their constituents and the rest of city government, trying to strike, strike that balance between hearing out what the constituents need or want or what their concerns are, while taking into consideration what the city needs as a whole. You know, individual concerns always can't be addressed, so trying to kind of find that right balance and be a good representative for the people who live within your district.
Thank you. What characteristics, qualifications, experiences do you possess that make you the most viable candidate for this position?
I feel like that's a really long list. I do have a bachelor's degree in political science, constitutional law emphasis, which as a small business owner, I haven't gotten to use nearly as often. I have served on many different boards, both, both within my industry. I served on the executive board of the Wisconsin Upper Michigan Florists Association, the Calaflora President's Education Board. I have been involved in the city. I've worked as an election inspector for many different cycles. And I've got, of course, experience running my own team at my small business. So I have a lot of opportunity to find compromise and work with other people who have very different opinions and trying to move a group forward, particularly working with florists. They definitely have different opinions, different ways they want to go, creative minds. So being able to work with people who are very disparate from me and trying to find a way forward is, is a really great skillset I've been able to garner.
Thank you. Have you ever previously considered running for elder person? If you have, why haven't you run?
I've considered it. In the past, I have worked with others on their campaigns. I've done stumping and things like that. In the consideration, my children were much younger at that point. You know, with the length of an alderman's term. Right now, my youngest is a fifth grader. So it's, it's realistic that in the last couple times that it would have maybe been of interest to me. I just didn't feel like I could strike that balance between my family, my business, and being able to serve the city. Now with my children being older, having a high schooler, I feel like I, and of course, many more years of running my business under my belt, I feel like I can, you know, leave those aside to do the duties that would be required to be a participant in city government.
Thank you. The city is in a stage of redevelopment. What areas in District One do you believe have the greatest need? And do you feel the common council has correctly handled economic development in the city as a whole?
I think there's definitely been a lot of discussion about the development in our particular district. There was the attention to the Burnham Point area and the corridor that, you know, that's close to National Avenue and things like that. So I know that there's been attention paid to that and a lot of discussion about that. There's obviously still work that needs to be done, a lot of vacant buildings, a lot of businesses that could use some assistance. And of course, that's the area of the city where we're finding a larger portion of the crime and things like that. So those are all concerns of constituents and of people who live in the area. We've had really wonderful development there. I think there's really great businesses, small businesses, restaurants, really strong neighborhood associations there. Both East Dallas and Liberty Heights are both very involved in the community. So I think there's a lot of potential there, but I think, you know, there's a lot of growth, but still a lot of potential left. I think the city as a whole, I really like the way it's been going. That's the reason I decided to keep the business in West Dallas. It was originally a Wauwatosa company, but I live here, my kids go to school here, and I really like the direction that the city's going, the growth, the help that there is for small businesses. And we have really, really great services. I think overall, the city's direction is so positive that I'm really excited to be a part of it.
Thank you. You alluded to some of this previously, but do you understand the time commitment required for an elder person, meetings, constituent interactions, general community involvement, et cetera? And do you have the time and flexibility to accommodate the schedule?
That was definitely part of the consideration in deciding whether or not to approach the council as a potential replacement. I do feel that I do have the time. The evenings work well, very well for me as far as responding to constituents. That can be done all times of the day and night, and I'm sure it happens probably in the grocery store. But as I am the owner of the company, I can alter my schedule to certainly fit the needs of the committees, the council, and constituents. I've even done that to be able to be a part of other things that are going on in the city, whether it's events, again, with doing the elections, or even being there for different ribbon cuttings and things like that. I've tried to find a way to be of support to other businesses and citizens where I could. Currently, I'm not serving on any of those other boards. I'm, I stepped away from the Liberty Heights Neighborhood Association. Also, I feel like my time has been freed up and could be dedicated to this.
Thank you. Do you have any conflicts of interest that we should be aware of?
I can't imagine so.
Is there anything in your background that may come up for which you'd like to provide an explanation?
Same thing, I can't imagine. I'm, I'm pretty much an open book. Anybody who meets me will learn plenty about me in a very, very short period of time. I'm an open book. There's, there's nothing that exciting there.
What is your opinion of the city budget and taxes? And do you have any ideas that you would share?
I think this is always one of those kind of push-pull kind of things. I, I think residents are always hoping for lower taxes, but we also want to be able to provide excellent services. And I think that's a really, really tough place for the council to be in and the government as a whole. I think for the city of its size, I think the taxes are probably at a very comparable rate to other communities of similar size. But I actually think we found a balance where our services are so much better. I'm always very impressed with our Public Works Department, with our police and fire departments. I think that what we're able to provide within the taxes that we're collecting has been really excellent. Since I don't have experience in necessarily that part of it, I would be looking forward to learn and then maybe would have more ideas as far as what we could do to expand and make that even better or... But I think what West Dallas does with what we have is really, really excellent.
Thank you. How would you, as an elder person, support the strategic plan, goals, mission, and vision of the city?
I would see it as an older person's part to be very supportive of businesses who are interested in coming into our city as well, specifically into my district, working with the state government, for the grants and groups like Kiva to make sure that small businesses who are interested in locating or growing in West Dallas have that opportunity, listening to them and listening to their neighbors to make sure that the growth and position of those business is beneficial for everybody in the community.
Thank you. Is there anything else you would like to share at this point?
Oh goodness. I think not specifically. Like I said, I, I'm really excited about being a part of the West Dallas community. I really have enjoyed getting to know some of you and being a part of the events and the growth going on in West Dallas. And if there's any way that I can be a part of that to make this even better, that would be, you know, a perfect opportunity.
Did you have any questions for council? And I don't know if they have any questions.
I guess if anybody, again, like I've served on other boards and I've worked with diverse groups, as I've mentioned, but if anybody has input on what they find the most challenging part and the most rewarding about being a member of the common council.
There you go, Kevin.
All won't have to answer that. I just think it would be really an, an opportunity to hear that.
So I'm thinking for a little bit, so I'll start talking while I'm thinking. I, I, I enjoy being an alderman, I enjoy be, getting the opportunity to serve. And it's really valuable to me being able to serve the community. That sounds cheesy, I get that, but it's the truth.
Love cheese, it's okay.
Yeah. And so to answer your question directly about the, the challenges, I, I think that the biggest challenge is at budget time, which we've just gone through right now, crafting a budget where we're, we're held back by levy limits, but the cost of everything goes up and the cost of everything that we do goes up by more than what the levy limits allow us to accommodate. That's untenable. So how do you do that? How do you handle that? Thankfully, as a council, we have a, a good mayor and city administrator and department heads that we can rely on for their professional expertise, in particular, on, on issues like that. So, so, so I, really, I, I can, I can thankfully say it's, there isn't an awful part of, of being an alderman. That's, you know, I, I haven't gotten calls at 2:00 AM or anything like that because of a barking dog. That's just, those are my thoughts.
I have gotten calls. Quite a few years. I have in the past, that was at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning.
I, I believe a year ago it used to be more the fact, but today I think...
It's mostly emails.
Yeah, people got more relaxed about that.
More respectful today than they were a number of years ago. Now that they're here. But it's, I find it to be fun, challenging. I think it's, it's very interesting to be involved in, you're on a board of directors of the city. You set the policy here. We set the policy, we determine where the city is going, what direction it's going, and, and that's the job of the council. Mayor's job is to fulfill what the council's policy is and to carry out those goals and objectives. And so I see it as, as a great challenge and, and I like doing it. It's fun. It's nice seeing the, the growth in, in the city and especially on the east end, the, all the new developments that we've had over the years. From what it was when I first was elected, when Alice Chalmers was a big industry and press steel tank and, and the junkyards across from the market and, and all of those things, and it's all cleaned up now. And, and there's a lot to do yet, but we've made a lot of progress and, and I just want, I'm just proud of the fact that we've been able to do that.
I think you should be.
I like, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I wanted to add something. Being one of the newer Alders, just recently elected in 2020, my biggest challenge to start off with was, everything was so exciting and I wanted to have my hand in every little pot. And it was, then became overwhelming. So really was, for me, what was challenging is to sit down and focus on what, one, my district, not being an elder at large. And then, two, the city initiatives that truly meant something and try to process it out so it didn't become overwhelming with a full-time job and a life, you know, a personal life and a this. So that was my biggest challenge, but the rewarding aspect, as all of them had stated, is, is beyond when you see that development that you've talked about for a year, and there it is, and, you know, you get to patronize it and you can see it from ground up and citizens that are really in a tough spot and you're able to help them out. Now, not everything can be done on an individual level, like you had previously stated, but those that you can help out, you can connect with a program that's offered in West Dallas that is truly beneficial to them is what helps make it rewarding.
Thank you.
I think the thing that I like the best is getting on a meeting with our constituents and talking to them. But the one frustrating thing is when you've got somebody that comes with a specific problem that they have and due to regulations or whatever, you can't help them get around that problem. So you have to kind of come up with a solution. So that's the frustrating part, is trying to help them when you can't. But if you can come up with something, you know, some other path or whatever for them, that always seems to be rewarding when that happens.
And they probably just feel good to be heard out to sometimes.
Yes.
And I'm gonna add to that. Both Dana and I took office in 2020. And what I found most rewarding at that time was starting out like you did. You're a small business owner, involved in the community, have a love for the community, and decided to run. So if you get this position, I think you will see how much more rewarding it is to be part of that decision-making, to be the voice of the people. I own a barber shop, so of course, everybody talks and talks all day anyhow, but kind of be in that pulse within your community, especially in your district. One of the biggest challenges was being thrown from the frying pan into the fire during COVID. You know, there wasn't, you know, I mean, our city departments, Rebecca specifically, Mayor Devine, you know, just trying to navigate everything and then still get our training and whatnot. So we've learned a lot within the first couple of years. We come in with our, our rose-colored glasses on and, and learned a lot in the process.
That was new for everybody, you know, you guys were kind of all on equal footing dealing with that. But yeah, I, I appreciate the challenges you guys had to face with it.
Yeah, I could take a really, about an F1 hour.
But we only got two, we only got two minutes. We got one minute to the next interview.
Well, we do.
Yeah, I liked that little five minutes. What do you think, older person and Suzette, what do you think? If I manage so tight?
I think you love your job.
Yes.
And you're good at it.
I, I do really, in all fairness, I came to West Dallas, I was not quite 18 years old, you know? So, and I always lived in West Dallas. First, when I came here, I live on 61st, part of Lincoln, with my uncle. So, so my life really grew within this community, really, from, from being a, a young man. So I was involved throughout the years in various organizations, you know? I mean, I got to know many people, you know, within the city of West Dallas, Nice Columbus, Lions Club, St. Rita's, Old Hames Society, you know? I mean, I, I, I did really join a lot of, lot of groups of, of good organizations, you know? So, so my job always been as an alderman, you know, to, first of all, to look up for the citizen, you know? Not just the district, but the entirety of West Dallas, you know? Not just the east end. I think our job is to overlook the, the entire community, you know? If an issue comes up, try to work things together, you know, between us as older persons. And, and the fact it is that I believe, like Alderman Lysak states, that the Alice Chalmers crisis was pretty sad when it occurred, you know? Back in 1988, I think at that time, our city development director, John Stevo, which is retired now, so, so he's been part of the solution, you know, during the, that time of Alice Chalmers falling apart. So, and, and many other industries that, that we lost throughout the years. So I, I always tried to, to be fair as, as an alderman, you know? I mean, I could, I could have been wrong many times, you know, because that's part of the job. You can always be right, you know? So I, I always felt that I try my best, but I can always screw something up, you know? I mean, that's, that's...
You do good.
Fact of life.
Always another day, yeah.
So, so at this point, I get what I had to say. So, so I'm proud to serve the citizens of West Dallas, you know, for 34 years already. So I, I'm glad that I, I had the opportunities, you know, back then. And that's why I always have respect, I have a respect for the citizens. If somebody tried to tell me something I don't like, I tell them right off. I mean, that's, that's what life is. You succeed more in the future to put up with some people that have no sense. If you have no sense, I don't like that, you know? I mean, I just don't like people that are fair and try to work together with, with us too here. I, I believe we have a hell of a good group of people, you know? We disagree a lot of time, you know? Like I said before, I'm not the honest guy, you know? I mean, I could be a little buggier, you know, but, but like I said, that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Rebecca, can I just make a statement? One that I'm gonna say to all those today is, regardless of how this turns out, whether you, if you don't get it, I hope it wouldn't discourage you to see you in 2024 because that's when it's up to the citizens, that's who you're representing. So I just think that's important to know that, and I'm again gonna say this to all, so I don't want you to take us away, that...
Not at all.
I just hope it wouldn't discourage you for when the next cycle comes, to see your name out there.
For example, it's me.
Yes, that's right.
I didn't get picked in 2000, and I ran in 2019 and beat the guy who they picked.
There you go.
I do have a question for the candidate.
Hold on one.
Background on the business, how many employees do you currently have? How long have you owned it?
So I took over ownership of the business in November of 2018. Yes, 15 months before a pandemic. I have three full-time employees and about three part-time, and then at holidays, it really increases. We bring in a lot of drivers and contract designers and things like that for Valentine's Week and Mother's Day and things like that.
So it's not the retail florist business that it was? I grew up in Tulsa Lockers.
No, I mean...
Full disclosure, my first girlfriend worked at Lockers. It was 1975.
There you go. It is the same company, it's been around since 1911.
But it's, but it's not at all what it, what some people might remember it is. It's really...
No, I mean, and you have to change with the times. I mean, any company that lasts more than a century has to make some changes. And that's certainly what I've tried to do. I'm, I'm sure, that's even what the city's trying to do. You want to hold on to those roots and things that are the base and that makes it special, but still pivot to make sure that you're able to attract the best and brightest and things that are going to make the city vibrant. It's no different with the business, you know? We want to keep the core of what we do, you know, as far as customer service and things like that. But, you know, designs change, tastes change, how you need to do business changes. You know, we knew that before COVID, but that certainly solidified it.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Just to let you know, we are not making a decision tonight. We may or may not make a recommendation to the council. This committee doesn't have the authority to make that decision. The full council has to make that decision. But we ultimately, this committee will make a recommendation to the council or not make a recommendation to the council, depending on...
Which is really us.
Whatever we decide tonight.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
Same too.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think it was my second girlfriend.
She still works there.
I was gonna say, you know, she probably was...
Marty, you're listening? He goes, she still works there.
She's the night manager now.
1975, she's not alive anymore. And she was an older woman.
I haven't.
Oh, okay.
She had her driver's license.
She's, she's not alive anymore, I'm 74. What are you talking about? She's not alive anymore. She had a library card. I'm 74.
Hello, Mr. Pryor.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
I think we'll go around and introduce ourselves so that, you know, who is, who's out here and who's asking questions.
Hey, I'm Rebecca Grill, I'm the City Administrator and City Clerk.
I'm Marty Weigle, one of the two second district aldermen.
Vince. Vince Vitale, first district alderman.
Dana Keen, Alderman of the third district.
Tom Lysak, Alderman, fourth district and council president.
I'm Kevin Haas, I'm one of the fifth district alderpersons.
Suzette Grisham, Alderwoman, third district.
Dan Roat, fourth district.
Tracy Tfansky, second district.
Thank you for letting me be here tonight, appreciate it.
Go ahead.
Welcome.
Thanks for your interest in the vacancy. I'm gonna be asking you the questions. Feel free to look at the council when you're answering, even though I'm asking the questions. Some of them are similar to what you submitted already, but if you could still provide an answer orally, that would be appreciated.
Okay.
How do you view the role of an elder person?
Essentially, I'm a spokesperson or representative for the people in the community. They voice their concerns to me. And I can provide feedback to them, contact the people I need to contact, whatever their concerns are, maybe garbage, I don't know, name the issue, and then just get back to them in a timely manner. And just represent their interests, not mine.
Thank you. What characteristics, qualifications, experiences do you possess that make you the most viable candidate for the position?
I think my whole upbringing, my whole life actually, being born in the military, traveling the world up till like sixth, seventh grade, experiencing different cultures. Obviously, attending college was a big part of my life as well, but then my career after college, teaching in Chicago for 20 years plus, definitely had an impact on my view of the world. And last, the last 10 years as well, starting my own business, struggling at first with that, and now we're quite prosperous, very successful, dark destination in southeast Wisconsin. So I think all those experiences combined have allowed me to just understand people from all backgrounds, where they're coming from, and just, you know, communicate with them with compassion, while at the same time, understanding that some of their concerns may or may not be able to be addressed, depending on the situation. But I think that is, I think all those things, the last 40 years, the military experiences, teaching a white Frank, a very rough neighborhood in Chicago, and then just the last 10 years in east, west Dallas have all influenced my perspective on the world, actually.
Thank you. Have you ever previously considered running for elder person?
I'll be quite honest, no, until I saw this on the honest Facebook, and I was like, I think it's something I'd be very good at, with my, again, my communication skills, written and verbal. The world understands social media now, and as, that is a means of communication as well, and my organization, my promptness of addressing people and their, and the issues and contacting the people I'll need to contact. and contacting the people I'll need to contact. I think all those factors played a factor in it. Plus, we really enjoy just the diversity and the vibrancy of District One and eastern side of West Dallas.
Thank you. The city is in a stage of redevelopment. What areas in District One do you believe have the greatest need? And do you feel the common council has correctly handled economic development in the city as a whole?
As a whole, yes. I think the areas that are being developed, the areas that need to be developed. There's only vacant, older commercial areas that have been, since I've been here, have been vacant. They just built, I know, the, the hospital or there, there near where I live. Obviously, the large complex going up by OPA and Farmer's Market. I think those are all areas, we've got dead, if I call it, whatever you wanna call it, dead land. I mean, it needs to be developed in some manner. Now the, the dicey part becomes the development versus, like Dan said in my letter, the uniqueness of West Dallas's neighborhoods as well, so. But I think the areas I see developed are areas that need to be developed. And there are other areas also in, basically in the same general location that also need to be looked at.
Thank you. Do you understand the time commitment required for an elder person? The meetings, constituent interactions, general community involvement, et cetera? And do you have the time and flexibility to accommodate this schedule?
Definitely have the time and flexibility. As of right now, I do not know the magnitude of it, to be quite honest with you. I'm sure it's gonna be more than I expect, but I have the flexibility in my schedule to make things work, there's always time. I can always squeeze out the minutes and the hours I need to, to, to attend those things I need to attend to. My wife and I both own the business, so that is an advantage, definitely an advantage.
Do you have any conflicts of interest that we should be aware of?
None that I'm aware of.
Anything in your background that may come up that we, that you'd like to provide an explanation for?
None that I'm aware of.
What is your opinion of the city budget and taxes? And do you have any ideas to share regarding those?
I'll be quite honest, I'm not really familiar with the budget or the taxes. I know the taxes are, people complain about them. To me, I think the services the city provides are very solid. I've never had one issue with snow removal, police response, the services I've all, I've dealt with have all been superior, to be quite honest with you. And that ties into the economic development as well, though. That does increase the tax revenue, obviously, which hopefully in the long run would keep taxes down for, or keep them where they're at for a period of time, I'd hope. Again, I'm not, I'm gonna be quite honest, I'm not banned. I don't know, I don't know what the city budget is. I do know what the taxes, taxes are, because we do pay those, obviously. I don't know what's allocated to what. I am not familiar with any of those things right now, I'm not gonna comment on that. Intentionally anyways.
Thank you. I think that was pretty good. How would you, as an elder person, support the strategic plan, goals, mission, and vision of the city?
Again, I see the, I mean, I can see the vision of the city. You see it getting built up right now as we speak. I just think West Dallas as a whole is a very unique community, diverse. There's a lot to offer. And I, everything, as, as an elder person, I would just promote that quality of it. And I think it needs to further be developed. At the same time, I think, I see, I fear, I hear the concerns of some of the citizens via social media about, you know, it being too, the rent's too high, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a fine line that needs to be addressed with that as well.
Thank you. Is there anything else you would like to share with the council?
No, I just look forward to hopefully being an elder person and working with the city and keeping the vision going, because I like what I see so far. What's going on in this part of West Dallas. I'm not familiar with other sections of West Dallas as much. I mean, I do go there. And, you know, as you know, West Dallas becomes a little different as you move west, but that's pretty much all I have to offer right now. But I do not know any questions. If I do get the position, if I'm lucky enough, I'm sure I'll have plenty of questions.
Thank you.
I have a question for you, and thank you for coming tonight.
Oh, thank you.
What volunteer work have you done outside of your business? Have you served on any boards, community events, things like that?
No, not really volunteer work. We, tied into our business, we do fundraisers for a couple of organizations. I've done volunteer work in the past, prior to moving here in Chicago. Our main, our main focus are, as far as, what you just asked, would be the fundraisers. We put a lot of time into, we pride ourselves on helping the two organizations we help.
Have you served on any boards in official capacity?
Any boards I sat on would be school-related.
Okay.
But at a school level, not at the city level.
Okay, all right, thank you.
If I may, Rebecca, can I ask?
Please, you can ask.
Oh, you said chair. I'm sorry about, sorry about that. It comes with the age, you know. But anyway, my question it is, during the year, like I said, sometimes we have contracts with the police department, fire department, within our structures. So, so when it comes to a contract, how, how would you digest the decision-making, you know, to determine your thoughts and, you know, for the police, fire, and everybody else? So what would be your determination?
Well, I'd see, I'd have to see what the, what was being asked, what the issue was essentially. You're looking at salary, benefits, vacation time, I don't know exactly what the issue would be. Got to see what all we have, the city has in their budget, what they're asking for in return. But I always say this, as far as police and firemen go, I think, and teachers as well, or anybody who works in those industries or that field, you can't really underestimate what they provide to the city. I mean, I've never had one negative, one negative interaction with the police, not that I've had a lot of them, but the few that I do have, in my business, I do have them. Never had one negative one. I know we've hired quite a few police officers. I know there's a lot of young gentlemen running around in the police uniform lately.
They get younger and younger, don't they?
Yeah, well, I'm getting older.
As I get older, they get younger. Yeah.
I mean, I will respect that a hundred percent, you know. But, but my question is, so, so when it comes to determine, once you say you'll be chosen to represent the first district in West Dallas, when it comes to finalize a decision, because say you know, say a fireman, you know, the police chief or, or the fire chief, would, would you focus in yourself within that budget for the interest, of course, with the police department, fire, and everybody else, and the citizens of West Dallas? Would you weigh all those facts before you vote on it?
Most certainly. I'm looking for, my goal as an elder person is representing the people of my district. And that's my first priority. So I'd always state their concerns, their concerns or their voice will always be a major part of my decision-making process, always.
Very good, thanks.
And Mr. Chair. Yes, so we wanna make West Dallas a destination. We want to make West Dallas a place where people want to come to, want to relocate to. And you have a story like that. You relocated from Chicago to West Dallas. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, essentially, my wife's daughter lived here. And we, I was ready to get out of the education field for, not children reasons, more just the politics of schooling in Chicago at that time. And so we chose to look around this area. We found basically the establishment we have now. And the previous owner had a little bit of DARTs going. It sounds strange, but he had a few DART teams going. And we kind of built on that. And now we have a weekly event, which last week drew sixty people. I'd say thirty from, from not West Dallas were there. Many from Kenosha, southern Wisconsin come up for that, northern Illinois. And over the years, this has become one of the larger Saturday night DART events in this area, to be quite honest with you, as silly as that might sound. But we average forty to sixty every Saturday night. So a lot of people spend the night, obviously they'll go eat somewhere before they come to our place, things of that nature. But we consider ourselves a destination location, for sure, especially on a Saturday night.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll just, I'll go ahead.
Ten years in business here?
Correct.
And you bought the building, if I remember?
Correct, and the house next door, so.
And how many employees?
Approximately varies, five to seven.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll just give the statement that I'm giving to everyone, that regardless of the decision tonight, I hope whether you get it, you don't get it, that we see your name in twenty twenty-four. Ultimately, the decision is gonna be then up to the citizens, as it should be.
Yes.
This is an appointment.
Yes.
So again, regardless of how this goes, if you don't get it, I hope it doesn't disappoint you to the fact where you wouldn't consider running, or if you do get it, again, rerunning in twenty twenty-four, because we'd like to see your name on
I feel like this is an honor, so I look forward to hopefully getting this position. And I've loved every minute in West Dallas. I look forward to the next ten or fifteen years, I'll be walking around this planet.
This committee is the committee as a whole, and we do not make a decision. We will make a recommendation to the common council. The common council, ultimately, which consists of all of us.
Yeah.
But that's the formal body that has to make the final decision. So we will make a recommendation for something for the next council meeting, whether it's to appoint one of the applicants or not appoint an applicant or appoint somebody totally different.
Okay.
So, but staff will be in touch with you and we will let you know what the outcome is.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it. You guys are doing a great job, keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you. When I was bottoms up, I used to shoot against that dart league.
I remember it was bottoms up, I lived two blocks away, yeah.
My nephew shoots.
It was bottoms up when we opened up in nineteen eighty.
Yeah.
So they were there a lot, bottoms up was there a lot.
Yeah.
Hello?
Hello.
Do I have to wear this?
No, no, no.
Just sitting there.
I think we'll start off by everyone introducing themselves, so you know who everyone is.
Rebecca Girl, I'm the city administrator and city clerk.
Marty Weigl, I signed the library board a couple of years ago, second district alderman.
That's okay, Ray, that's me.
I know you.
Dana Keen, alderwoman of the third district.
Me too.
Tom Lysak, fourth district alderman and council president.
Thank you. I'm Kevin Haas, fifth district.
I'm Suzette Grisham, third district alderman.
Dan Roat, fourth district.
And Tracy Stefanski, other second district alderman.
Nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you for being here tonight. I'm gonna be asking the questions for the committee. Feel free to look at them when you're answering. You don't have to look at me just because I'm asking you the questions. Some of them are similar to what you submitted already, but for the purpose of the oral interview, please provide the answers, appropriate answers. How do you view the role of an elder person?
Well, I, I view it as a person who represents the people in your particular area, district, talks to those people, let them know, let the other, when you do any kind of, anything administrative, that you do something to, that, based upon what they say. Not necessarily have to do what they say, but at least someone should know how the people in the neighborhood feels about it.
Thank you. What characteristics, qualifications, experiences do you possess that make you the most viable candidate for this position?
Okay, for over forty years, I've been in, pretty much in retail. But not just retail, usually in operational function. Also trainer of the stores, store manager, district managers. And the other nice thing about it, I guess, got the chance to travel and go to other stores and help open those stores, hire new people. And because of that, you know, it's, it's good to be able, I've dealt with different types of personalities, different type of people, so that, and I think that's something that we have in our, in our, in our city. You have to be able to deal with those people and learn what to do, what they need, their needs, and what they can give to you, or what information they can give to you.
Thank you. Have you ever previously considered running for elder person? And if you have, why haven't you run?
I did at one time, but unfortunately, when I was working, and it's, it's kind of sad, my wife still doesn't like it, if I would work probably seventy hours a week. And the only thing I did when I went home is I just laid up and laid in bed or went and watched television. It was just, and if I work, did something as an alderman, as you guys know, you have to, that time, you, you have to give time to that. And if I couldn't give time to that, it just, it wouldn't be right for you or for me.
Thank you. The city is in a stage of redevelopment. What areas in District One do you believe have the greatest need? And do you feel the common council has correctly handled economic development in the city as a whole?
I'm pretty happy with it. And I've noticed so many different company, companies opening up. I, I went to the ice cream shop, Station Six. I was able to go and check out some of the new buildings and the new apartments that we have going on, condos we have. I, I like that. I think that's the best way to keep people in the area instead of moving away, because not everyone can afford to buy a home right now. And it's kind of nice to be, have a place that you can go and be your friends and, you know, Station Six, I love that, you have your dogs with you and everything else, it's great. I just, I just, I think things are going pretty well with that, I really do.
Thank you. You alluded to this a little bit before, but do you understand the time commitment required for an elder person? The meetings, the constituent interactions, general community involvement, et cetera? And do you have the time and flexibility to accommodate this schedule?
I believe so. Right now, I help out, in the summertime, I work with the rec department. I actually, I'll be gonna bring it with me. We actually wrote a book, some of the kids and I did a book, because what I used to do was read to them, and then they, someone said, I would like to write a book, so we decided to write a, write a book with pictures that they, they made, they created. So I have time now, I didn't have time before. I also work with, I'm on the library board, and vice president of the library board. I work with the Liberty Heights area. I do that with my wife, I don't hold a position because it's not fair to, for us both to kind of gang up on everybody else. But, but I do work with that. I worked when, before, for, before COVID, I was helping out with the, with the, what school is that? One of the schools, working with the kids. And I also went to the middle school over there, and I was a, working with those kids as well. I have the time now. I'm retired, but I hate to say, my guys, when you get retired, you're gonna find out, you get bored quick. And I like to keep busy, I like to keep busy.
Thank you, can't wait to be bored.
I'm surprised. My wife kicks me out all the time, Chris, Ray.
Go do something.
Yeah, go do something.
She used to be my neighbor, Ray, so.
Know her and her father, yeah.
That's right.
Do you have any conflicts of interest that we should be aware of?
Uh, no, I, no, I don't. Like I said, I'm on the library board and I, I work with the rec department. I don't think that would be a problem at all.
And then is there anything in your background that would come up that you would want to provide an explanation for? And then is there anything in your background that would come up that you would want to provide an explanation for?
I had a pretty boring life. I haven't been arrested. I have never done anything that got me, got me in real trouble other than speeding a couple of times. But I, you know, I don't own stock in any company. That might be a problem. So other than that, that's about it.
Okay, so boring life.
Boring life, boring life. No, I don't, I don't, don't even drink, so that's a problem. They have like a free, not free, but they have as much coke as you want and you go to Safe Six.
What is your opinion of the city budget and taxes, and did you have any ideas about those that you would share?
I know you have to keep with the budget. I know you have to, and I'm used to dealing with budgets, you know, in my store. The store managers of the store and the district managers of the store have to, have to stay in their budget. And I've done some things to make that happen. Creative things to make it happen so that we could stay within the budget, especially the payroll. It's a, it's a tough thing to do because you see people, you, you have to let them go or, and the good people, you have to let go. Things that you would love to do and you can't do it, but unfortunately it's part of what we have. Otherwise, if you don't do it, everyone's going to suffer later on.
Thank you. How would you, as an elder person, support the strategic plan, goals, mission, and vision of the city?
Well, it's kind of like, I was just looking through those again. And believe it or not, some of the things that I had commented on when I sent that form out was based upon what you guys were thinking, what you're doing. Believe it or not, I didn't, I didn't know. It's pretty easy to, if you, if you think about it. If you give time to it, if you talk to other people, you get everyone involved. That's why you have a council. You don't have one person dealing with everything. And you can get ideals and bounce it around with everyone and make sure that these things can happen. I love the thing that you were looking at diversity. You were looking at building, business. Those are some of the things that I was talking about. I was looking at things like in the, the park system. I think we need to really work on, like Liberty Heights. There's a lot of challenges there. And that's one of the reasons I put down that that's one of the things I really wanted to work on. So, yeah.
Thank you. Is there anything else that you would want to share with the committee tonight?
Well, one of the things I was looking at is, I think my coming on board would be easier to solve a lot of problems. One, I'm already on the library board. And the person who left was the representative for the library board, so I could easily slip into that position right away. I'm used to the people, work with the people. I already have ideas and things I want to do. I know a lot of the people in the neighborhood. I'm very well-known because I do a lot of walking around the neighborhood, walking through the park. So I'm familiar with those people as well as the West Dallas Police Department because we talked a lot about things that we need to get, we need to do in terms of getting, getting some, people feel more protected, feel safer when they go through our park.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Or comments?
I have a comment. There's no questions. DJ, repeat that record. Said this to each candidate, and regardless of how this goes, whether you don't get it, you get it, we hope to see your name actually running in 2024. As again, you know, it's the citizens that vote. It's the citizens that you represent. So if you don't get it, we hope that this doesn't discourage you. If you do get it, we hope that you would rerun to let the citizens then take the time to choose their two elected officials, so.
Well, thank you. I already planned to do that, in fact.
Wonderful.
I'm just saying, I have a comment. I liked your comments on Liberty Heights parks that you did in your bio.
Oh, thank you.
I really liked them a lot. Excuse me.
I think it's, you know, Liberty Heights could be a great soccer field, if you think about, because I don't know where the other soccer fields are. So they, no, they're not around here. And there's so many people play that now.
They're in Qatar right now.
They won today, by the way.
Yeah, yeah.
Great game. Won to nothing. But anyway.
One nil, they say in soccer.
One nil.
Aren't they playing football over there?
And I, I don't know how people felt when I said about the basketball court. But I think that would really solve a problem because the kids, you need, you need adults to play with their kids. I used to go over there and play with my kid. And now you have that full court thing going. And I bet you can do a lot with that space if you needed to. But anyway, thank you. It's one of those things I have a feeling about all the time. My wife, you heard me too, right?
Yes.
That covers my question. What would be the first thing you would do if you got this position?
That would be it?
Alderman Lysick.
Alderman Tully.
Yeah, based, I mean, knowing Ray, you know, I I mean, I always respect that family. It's really been very, I mean, like I say, he's been connected with so many, you know, some of the jobs, I think that are very valuable, you know, so, so he's more budget, you know. I believe he has, Ray's got quality, you know, really, in all fairness. That's my opinion.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Turner?
No, just to let you know what the process is, this is a committee of the whole. We only make a recommendation for the common council, even though we are the same body.
Right.
That'll be next Tuesday, whether we make a recommendation for one of the interviewees this evening, none of the interviewees, interviewees this evening, or whatever we're going to do, we'll make a recommendation somehow for the council this evening night. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
Nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you too.
Thanks. Thank you.
Now hand your test papers to the person to your left for scoring.
Mr. Chair. It's up to you whether you want me to do the scoring or if someone wants to, just if you want to do hand votes or whatever you want to do, I'm willing to do math or or if you just want to do, get consensus, whatever.
I'm fine with.
I have a number one, a number two, and a number three.
I do too. Yeah, that's what I. Based on my scoring, I have it. So do we want to go, do you just want to do the ones?
Yeah.
Why do you want to go close session first?
You're not.
Close session, I don't.
And you're not able to go.
If we have, I think I read, if we have to, we could do it.
I believe we can.
That's not what Kale said.
Kale said no.
Oh, okay, okay. But that's what I read, you know.
Where?
We read the same email, Vince.
We got the same email.
Did you have your glasses on, Vince? Very important.
And importantly also, that's how we did it the last time.
That really made me feel old, you know.
You know, looking at my math, I have two people tied for first and they're clearly above the other, so. But that's just looking at my math. When I, when I think about how, who I prefer, I would prefer, if, this is what we're saying, right?
Mm-hmm.
I guess I would prefer to go with Ms. Grob. But it's, it's almost a toss-up with Mr. Turner.
Rebecca, you're going to calculate this?
Mm-hmm.
Are we just given who our number one is?
Yep.
Yeah. Vince, who's your number one?
Yeah, there again, based on the years really that I know Ray. I mean, I feel he's a level person, you know, very family-oriented man, you know. And that's why I feel, I mean, I think he'd be a good candidate to be appointed for the first aldermanic district.
Dana?
My number one was Mr. Turner also.
I have, I have a one and two. Number three is, I don't think. The number one was Ray. So Ray Turner.
And my number one was Ray Turner also. Yeah, his involvement in the community is strongest to this point. And has a great background, background as a manager. They all have backgrounds as managers, but still.
He seems like he's able to communicate too.
And I had a tie for that, but my pick would be Ray Turner.
I had Ray Turner.
So do I.
There we go.
So seven to one.
Well, yeah, I'm tied.
I have him tied. And the other thing I want to say too, which is the truth, is, is we have three really good candidates. And we, no matter where we go, we aren't making a mistake. That's a good problem to have.
Exactly.
I was just surprised we didn't interview everybody since when I ran or when I tried, we interviewed 90 people. And so I was kind of concerned that we didn't give everybody a fair shot.
That's because I needed more help. Vince is standing and Vince could, didn't need as much help.
Actually, what we did when you were interviewing Tracy was probably not the correct way to do it because we hadn't been doing it in the past like that. Typically, staff had always, HR department, it always, as they do with any position that we have, any department or anything, would round the number of people, the applicants, to the ones that they thought were the most qualified. In this case, we did it. You know, we all got the papers in form and sent them to Rebecca. And, you know, the top three were fixed. If none of the interviews would have went well, you know, then we could have called in more people, different people, re-advertised, or, you know, just pick somebody out of the blue. We had other options. But I think, at least in my opinion, it worked out because we had, I think, at least two really good candidates.
Absolutely.
In all fairness.
I enjoyed all three, yeah.
And I had, I had a difficult time making that decision and my, the decision for me was that Ray is retired. He has more, more time at this time. And I know, even as a small business owner, that takes a lot of your time. So I think that balance would be better for Ray.
You know, there were certain, I mean, I'm sorry they used the term element. One element. I mean, it was disgraceful, really. So I'm glad he was not chosen to appear in front of us, really. I mean, it was disgusting, you know. I mean, it's just, we don't need.
What is?
What are we talking about? Nothing to do with any of these three people.
No, 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 not at all.
Then there's no point to talk about it.
We're talking about where we are, not what might have happened.
Yeah, we don't care about.
Well, I mean, I'm just going to say, the selection was, was great, you know, I mean, really, for three people. What I'm talking about, one, the applicant was disturbing, you know, I mean, totally offensive to the city, you know, and I got disappointed about it, you know.
Really? I didn't read that about any one of them. It's pointless, but.
I had candidates that I didn't feel were qualified and didn't answer the question.
But, but the mayor knows about it, Rebecca knows about it. You know, the fact that is, you can have somebody like that in the council, really, I said, oh, I mean.
We didn't interview him, so.
We didn't interview him, so.
Yeah, I'm glad he was not chosen.
I'm happy with who was presented and thank you all.
We have a clear winner. It's not like it's, you know, four to five.
We make a recommendation, a motion?
You can just directly put a resolution together for the consideration at the council meeting. It'll be on the 13th.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I didn't know that either.
I actually just updated my, I looked at the calendar and I was like, six, oh, oh, 13, okay.
And again, there's one meeting this month. It says on the calendar right there, correct?
Okay, thank you. You're going to produce new calendars?
Me?
We have. You know if they have this calendar out for the whole year, right?
Don't you be sassy.
That was given to us last year, December.
Rebecca asking her how to do that one.
I can shred these.
And will we adjourn? Alderman Lysick?
Yeah, I can shred these.